All right, let's go ahead and start. It is six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Everyone is here with the accession of Mr. Orndorfer. He will be coming a few minutes late. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to changes and to the agenda. We need to pull off the approval of the September 2020 regular meeting minutes as there needs to be a few corrections. So that will now become 9H. Are there any other corrections that need to be made?
Um, on the consent... Where are we here? No, discussion. So 9C. I sent a couple of emails. We weren't able to do anything prior to. So I'd like to remove it or table it. Whatever Jen might think.
Sounds good.
We need somebody in that position very quickly.
Do we hire without contracts, Dave?
Well, I would have... Why wasn't he offered a contract when he was offered the job? And isn't that what... I mean, the board, does it usually negotiate the contract of a new?
We haven't been... We weren't contacted until Monday morning.
Yeah, but is the board going to negotiate the contract of every new employee now?
If it's a standalone contract.
This is a standalone comp. Yep, it's always been that way.
What would we be hiring him based on? If we didn't have a contract?
Wasn't it posted for $19 an hour with the job description? Was that something different?
It's always been a standalone contract. Confidential office assistant.
Okay, I thought last month we...
We posted it as a job.
Community ed, we put a dollar amount on.
That was community ed?
Yeah, let me pull up the job listing. Hold on.
It just seemed to me like that was more of an administrative job to...
We've negotiated that contract ever since I've been on the board.
We haven't had a new person in that position since I've been on, so I guess...
Yeah, there's nothing in here about a monetary... Just if interested, position open till filled.
If we moved forward, we wouldn't be making an offer on... We don't know what the contract is going to say. So how can we offer a job?
What did the last one say?
Doesn't matter.
It's going to be a whole new written thing?
It's all up for negotiation, yeah. It's not set in stone. It's an individual contract, just like other... There's other ones like that too that we just negotiated.
Things that maybe changed since I was on the board before probably have. But I always thought the board just negotiated the contract with the superintendent as the individual. And then these other positions were taken care of by administration, except for negotiating with the teachers' union and the other union and so forth.
We negotiated with Dylan. We negotiated with Emily. Those contracts were negotiated and...
The prior person in that position negotiated two contracts.
So...
And the person before her negotiated that contract.
We don't have to negotiate something that's on a standard already pay, you know, like a new paraprofessional. They go on to the paraprofessional.
Right. There's no standard for this. This is its own position.
And we definitely have to look at the one from before because we're going to have a new person coming in. And like, what are they going to start at? And, you know, are they going to start where another person left off? Or are they going to start where that person started?
I thought it was posted with a dollar amount, but I must have been thinking of...
I... Community ed was, and so was payroll, but this one was not. Okay, so if we, at this point right now, we can choose to remove it or we can leave it on and table it when we come to that section. What would you guys like to do?
Can't it still be approved as it's written in the agenda?
So once you hire somebody without a contract, if you can't come to terms on a contract, then what do you do? Ask for resignation? Or are you obligated to just give them something? Don't know.
It's a good one.
And we do... And we will have, you know, how many, what? Four, if not five, special board meetings coming up for strategic plan? So we would not have to wait until the November meeting. We could add it real quick to one of the special meetings before we start the strategic plan. So, I mean, we don't have to wait a month. It could be a week or two weeks.
Well, yeah, we got to negotiate first.
Correct.
So you make guys maybe want to consider not tabling, but removing.
If we remove it, then we can add it to another meeting. If we table it, then we got to wait a month.
Then we got to wait, exactly.
Correct, yeah.
Because you have to watch the definition of table versus...
Okay.
Yep. So we're going to want to... So we're going to remove 9C, hiring of Cassidy Milks as confidential administrative assistant.
And just so everybody knows, I think Deb and I both responded with some dates that would work for negotiating coming up, so.
And we can, as soon as we can get it negotiated, we can bring it to one of the special meetings, yep.
Were there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion in a second to approve the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, change the agenda.
I have a motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, motion carries with one abstain. Next, we'll look for the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public input. Okay, Carol, come on up.
I just, real quick, just want to... Like, I know probably the answer is when we get working on it. But I really did, my whole family has suffered a bit of a crossing guard situation. We've had emails back and forth, you know, we've been working on it. Even at crossing guards, it'd be right for at least 60 years. That's when I started first grade. 60 years ago. It's not brain surgery or something that doesn't need to be reinvented. But I hear we're working on it, we're taking care of it. We have people there, we have volunteers. We're doing a good job on it. In the last two days, there's only been one person out there at the football crossing. Nobody has been at the crossing on the corner of 56, even the last two days. And before that, there would be days where there was nobody there, somebody there. We were told it's being corrected. But our group, we have two grandchildren living with us now. And we, they started walking to school when they started school. And when there was no crossing guards, we bring them to school and we pick them up. Ones in first grade. You cannot cross that football field without crossing guards or somebody there. I mean, like my wife says, we can do better. Because those little kids are sitting there waiting to cross. They step out between the cars, because there's cars that hold weight. They step out between the cars. And with all the grain trucks today, as I was coming in to pick up the kids, I was coming in on 14th. I was following two grain trucks and a gas truck. They slowed down. But if a little kid is stepping out in front... I mean, you know, we talk about making our schools safe, which we have from people entering. But I think we need to make it safe for these little kids. You know, it's different if you're middle school or high school. But first graders, and even Clara in third grade, she now knows that she has to wait for her brother and then one of us are there to pick her up. But it's not lack of science. I mean, if it takes six, well, I think we're around what, seventh week of school? If it takes seven weeks of school to get crossing guards set up, I'd hate to see what we do with curriculum because it's pretty slow. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Onto recognition and good things happening. We'd like to congratulate all our fall athletes and artists and best of luck as you head into the postseason. Onto the consent agenda. Next, we have Treasurers Report, October Bills and September Wires, September Treasurers Report and Bank Reconciliation, Budget Summary and Student Activity Account and Funds. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Next is fundraisers. The basketball program. Ronald McDonald House fundraiser up to $1,000. $500 matched by Rochester Tile. Each student athlete commits to doing 25 sit-ups every day for 30 consecutive days. Each player would be in charge of raising money by asking people to sponsor them. And we also have Student Council. They would like to do haunted trails again this year, holiday candy cane sales, Valentine's sales, halftime shootouts, and also pennies for patients. For personnel, we have the approval of Jenna Olson as a student representative on the school board, the approval of Dylan Emerson's 2022 through 2024 1.0 FTE contract. We have the approval of Emily Brum's 2022 through 2024.5 FTE contract. She is part-time as we share her with Southland. Also, the approval of hiring of Sean Kennedy as the JV Girls Basketball Coach for the school year of 2223 under the EA contract as a first-year coach for the sum of $3,277. And we also had the approval of the resignation of Kim Rundy, food service effective October 10th, 2022. If nobody has any questions or comments, we would look for a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to discussion and action items. First up is policy review, second readings. We have Policy 523, Policies that Incorporate by Reference, 525, Violence Prevention, 526, Hazing Prohibition, 527, Student Use of Parking and Motor Vehicle Patrols, Inspections and Searches, as well as the form, and 528, Student Parental Family and Marital Status Non-Discretion. In 528, there needs to be a correction made. Under the, one of the very last ones is we need to change principal to athletic director as our AD is the Title IX person for the district. Otherwise, the policy committee had no other changes on the second readings.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 523, 525, 526, 527, and 528 as corrected.
Okay, I have a motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the first readings of Policy 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by a Student, 530, Immunization Requirements, 531, The Pledge of Allegiance, 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds, 533, Wellness, and 535, Service Animals in Schools with the Form Attached.
I have some questions about the wellness one. Just that I'm not familiar with some of the aspects of it. It is 533. I understand that we participate in the National School Lunch, so we are required to have a wellness policy. And so, not that I want to get rid of any of these things, not that I'm opposed to anything. I'm just saying, are we following what we're supposed to be doing as far as on... Section three. It starts with A and then it's 1, ABC, and then it's 2. And it just talks about having vending machines. And I didn't know if we have to have approval to have a vending machine. I just didn't know. And I didn't want to go against this policy if we have, you know, either like not have the word in there or... I didn't know. And then the other one was... Rewards and incentives. Again, I'm not saying I don't want to have these things. I just don't want to run into a violation on them. Do we need to have that in this policy?
You know what, Deb? Being it's first reading, if you would like, you can email me and I will send your thoughts. This is first reading only. It's to get it in front of you guys. You send me your thoughts on this. I like what you're saying with vending machines, things like that.
Just questions, that's all.
Even like, what is a vending machine?
Yeah.
Do we have one currently or not, you know? Then I will forward that off to the policy group as a whole.
Okay.
To make sure then... Because we're already talking about meal stuff too.
Okay.
It's another thing. And Cass and Teresa will talk about that later.
Yeah.
But if you do that, we can get it right on our agenda for next month.
Will do.
Okay. Perfect, yeah. Just pull up whatever your thoughts are.
Okay.
And it prompts us to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what this first reading particularly is for.
Right, I just did...
We want your feedback.
I don't... I'm not disagreeing with things. I'm just saying, if we have it written down here, are we going to follow it?
Yep.
And are we currently?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or discussion, we would look for a motion to approve the first readings.
I'll make a motion to approve the first readings of Policy 529, 530, 531, 532, 533, and 535.
Okay, I have a motion by Tim.
I'll second Pat.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to discussion of arrangement of the monthly school board agenda.
I, okay. I am interested in us having a discussion of whether to take the principals' report and the superintendent's report and put them earlier in the agenda. And I have two reasons for that. One is that a lot of times, we have a lot of business. And by the time we get to the principal or the superintendent, it's very rushed. Everybody's really tired and they're like, okay, I'll be quick about this. And I don't feel like we get the benefit of really hearing their report. And the other reason I'd like to have it earlier is that I think sometimes it could inform our decisions that are going to come. You know, we might have questions or concerns or we might deal with something that could have been covered in the, already in the principals' and superintendent's report. So my discussion would be to have it earlier in the agenda to make better use of it, those two reports.
Are you thinking before the consent agenda?
I am thinking that.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
I think I can speak for Erin too. We would like that.
Okay.
I like the idea.
Okay.
I know we're exhausted too.
Right.
Just like you guys are. You guys are too at the end of the night.
Yeah.
So we want to be providing you with good information, so. We're for it.
All right. This is not really an action item, but it's just more of a FYI. So yes, we will look at next month, starting to remove the principals' report and the superintendent report to fall above the consent agenda.
Do you want to do the staff report and the student representative report? I think if we're going to do reports, I think we should lump them all together.
We can.
Why don't we do that? Because then...
Yep.
I mean, I know... I think that would be just easier, just to lump them all together.
Okay, I can do that.
Do we want to take all the school board committee reports and move them up there too? Or leave them at 10? Or what are you, what are you guys thinking there?
I think the committee reports could come later probably, but I don't know.
I agree.
I think they're just a brush review of anything that we've discussed in those meetings, so it's fine.
So if we take like, are you thinking, Cass, A, B, C, and D?
A, B, C. Well, yeah. A, B, C, D. Yeah, A, B, C, D.
And then putting those at the beginning? And then E would be number 10?
Yeah, we'd change.
I mean, we change it, but that, we could just call that school board committee reports.
Yep.
We just change the title.
Okay. Thank you. I think that might be beneficial to us.
So perfect. Yeah, Jen, I'll send you an email, quick reminder, so. All right, we will have those changes starting next month on the November agenda. Next, we have discussion and approval of increase of summer recreation position salary for John Stockdale. The current salary is $1,200. It's a stipend for the summer.
I believe I sent that to all, didn't I? Okay.
I'm no surprise, I have some questions. They're like, oh my gosh! No, but my first question is, in some of the things that I've read, is, is he, is this position a coach? Or is this position the director coordinator of summer rec? Because the reason I'm asking that is, it's saying here that the, in his, in the past, he had to, he was a summer recreation coach. And then he had to respond or rework with the coordinator. And then there's no mention of transportation, but I know you mentioned before that he also organized the transportation. I didn't know if he did that under his job as transportation? Or is this a different jo... I mean, has he really just, is it a different job? Is he the coach? Or is he the summer rec coordinator, including transportation?
Summer rec usually would fall under the Community Education Director. And then Leanne does work through the summer still as, you know, the community assistant. So Leanne still, you know, works on, make sure, you know, everyone's, all the classes are done, all the paperwork. Leanne still does all of that.
All right.
So, but the question I have too is that, we have it in the non-affiliated, that the community ed worker for adult is $12 an hour. So we might need to look at some language changes then too in the non-affiliated contract? Because if John is considered a community ed worker adult, this says $12, but then he's getting a stipend for something else.
What is that under, non-affiliated?
The non-affiliated, yeah. Under the hourly rates, yeah. Community education worker adult is 12. And the high school...
But he hasn't been getting that at all, has he?
Well, we don't know how many hours he's been put in.
Correct.
And he wouldn't be 12 because he would be on the, I mean, he would be, he's done it for a couple of years, correct? So that would increase him by a percent.
Correct, so yeah. He's been doing it for what? I don't even know how many years. So yeah, you know, there's, yeah, there's pay increases for the first three years up through the next. So you're looking at probably 15 to 16, maybe $17 an hour? If you go based on, you know, the pay scale here with the base of 12?
Yeah, so... And then I wonder if he could give us an estimate of the hours that he does? And then like, when he does the transportation, is that considered part of this job or part of his transportation job? Because I wouldn't think usually in the summer you'd have much transportation other than that? I don't know. Do you have, do you have a...
Just for like extended school year stuff for special, special ed kids?
Yeah. I don't know, those were my questions.
Yeah, so were you guys thinking of, if he's getting paid hourly right now, then this stipend would be on top of his hourly, right?
But I don't, I was under impression he was only getting a stipend.
I think so too.
That's what I think.
I think so too.
Okay, all right.
I think he was just getting that. I mean, to me that would...
He's just getting a flat fee to do community ed.
Yeah, to me, that'd make more sense to do the hourly for him because I gotta believe he's making more hourly. He's put a lot of time with those little guys to be over 12.
Right.
Correct. And he does do transportation, like, you know, with Jonathan, with the baseball. You know, some of the kids will arrive with the parents, but otherwise, John does take a school vehicle and he will take the kids to the games as well.
So what he, is, you know, like, during that time, you know, is he considered a bus driver? Does he get paid as a bus driver? Probably not. I want to be fair to him. I want to be fair to him.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up too. So like I said, I think we have a bunch of questions that we haven't thought about. So I don't think, I think there's a lot of places where not, he may not. I was under impression he was getting paid $1,200 bucks for all of that stuff.
I think so, but...
I thought it was kind of low for doing all that stuff. So that's the only reason.
Yeah, that's what I was...
So that's why, that's why I brought it up. Just I was get, I thought he did such a good job, I don't want to lose him doing it.
Right.
I thought he was doing all of that stuff for that.
So we can, kind of following up on your question, Deb, but add more to it?
Yeah.
So you asked a question, how many hours? But then what are you doing in those hours? What, how are you counting those hours?
I mean, it's...
Is it transport, coaching?
Well, and that's, that was, that was my thing. If we're paying him hourly, but then, you know, because he does other community ed stuff too, I believe. But then, like this just said, head coach for beating baseball, Pee-Wee Baseball, and T-ball. So that's just your couple of months in the summer. So is that, you know, we just pay him, if he's getting paid the hourly, then we're just paying him the $1,200 to do the baseball stuff? That's what I didn't...
Right. I was not aware of the hourly. I would thought he told me it was just a 12.
I don't know if he has been paid anything above this.
A $1,200.
But that's what I was wondering. It's like, where does transportation fall in here and all the other things? Yes?
Can I just voice or ask something?
Wait, can you?
Is this something that maybe could look at the city being involved in also? Because I know a lot of towns do summer rec and their city contributes. The school may be handling it.
That would be awesome.
The city contributes some funds to help, I'm not saying to do it.
Liberty, the city already does. They, because the school hosts community ed, yeah, the city's supposed to require it. I asked Patty about this. They give it $2,000 or $3,000 for the summer program.
Every year?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep. That's why the city gets their hands off, don't have to worry about it because the school will cover it. Yep.
So do we need to look at it to get him paid hourly and then possibly give him a stipend on top of it?
I don't, I just brought it up to you guys.
I don't know what's our, I mean...
But asking him the questions of what does he consider to be duties? Is it transporting kids? You know, being on the bus from start A to B?
Yep.
And then back again? And then the coaching piece? And we can lay it all out in a spreadsheet?
Just look at what's going to benefit.
I just appreciate you looking into that.
How many hours are we estimating and...
I was going to say, look at, because, you know, last year it's... I can't remember where, you know, the boys went last year. And like I said, John would drive the van with all the equipment and the extra kids. Yeah. So, you know, you look at, you have T-ball practice and then you have baseball practice. We didn't have enough for softball, so the girls joined the boys to play baseball. But he should be able to get a pretty good idea how many hours it was last year. And then once we figure out how many years he's been here, that'll give us the pay scale, that'd even get a better number.
And if he only wants to be paid for a certain thing, that's up to John. I mean, that's, he can let us know. I just don't want to, you know, assume anything.
Yeah, we can spreadsheet this out for you guys, not a problem. Not a problem.
Thank you for just looking into that.
So, let's look at tabling this and bring it back in November. Okay, so, can I have a motion to table?
I'll motion to table.
Motion by Cassidy?
Second.
Second by Chad, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the LED project update discussion and approval of attorney opinion.
Teresa, I'll start, if you want. So, Teresa and I had a phone call, as you guys recall, and I have to say, Teresa did a really nice job of laying out everything, including the company that installed the bulbs, she talked about them too at length, and Morgan was very open to what you were saying, and she asked some questions, we had to provide some clarification, not a whole lot, but she got the general idea. There you go, Teresa, go ahead, I'm sorry, while you were looking.
Yeah, Morgan had some basic questions, you know, a lot of the thing was is, let me find all my notes here, that, you know, we went under, you know, Minnesota state statute that the district has to recruit, excuse me, recoup the money from the project within fifteen years. One of the things we had, I looked at, we had, she recommended that we go back to TRC, and have them run the information with what was supposed to be installed for energy savings, and run what was actually installed, to make sure that there's no issues that way as well, and as you guys see, retrofit did that. She did get our attorney, or the letter sent to everyone. I did ask the question about attorney's fees, that if the correct bulbs had been installed, we would not have had to reach out to Morgan. And I said, so, is it, is it feasible, and is it okay? And she goes, absolutely, you can ask them to pay your attorney's fees, because this is their mistake, and I said, frankly, our taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for that. So, she said, absolutely, you can ask for those as well. As you can see from Morgan's email, what she came back with is, yes, technically, it is a breach of contract, and do we want to go down that route, and have them install the correct ones, or it would be fine to accept the, you know, offer? And she goes, frankly, she goes, I mean, you don't have to just accept their ten, if you want to ask for more, you can. And she goes, yes, it is acceptable to ask for the attorney fees. So, we need to decide what we would like to do to proceed forward.
Do we have any idea what the attorney fees are going to be?
I think she is approximately, now, don't quote me on this, because this is a couple of years ago, but they're about four hundred dollars an hour. We were only on for maybe ten minutes, but this write-up and the research is what's going to cost us. So, you could say, because she's very good, I'd say maybe a thousand or two thousand dollars at most, but I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know for sure.
So, I'm thinking about this, looking at her first opinion about it's a breach of contract dispute. Looking, I guess, for the district moving forward. If we settle for anything but what was in writing on how the job was supposed to be done, then if we ever have a breach of another contract of any kind, that's like putting a pry bar on a door right now. Do we want to keep the line in the sand of, here's the breach, here's what was supposed to be installed, that's what it is? Or do we want to negotiate and open that door for any other breach of contracts that may come in the future? Because now we set a precedence of bending a little. I don't mind saving money either, but nobody had any issues with the dollar amount when we approved it either.
I personally don't think it's worth going down the road of any type of lawsuit over or anything like that.
I'm not saying that, Dave, it's just she stated that this is a breach of contract. So, if we go a different route, and, and discuss things with them, say we do an HVAC project, and somebody decides, eh, I'm going to use this material, and then, it's not what we wanted, it's not what was in writing. So, what do we do there? Do we let them bend the rules too, because we just let these guys bend the rules? That's my question.
That's prob- probably a lot of extenuating circumstances if they use something that was of lower quality.
But we don't know that in this case. No, but we don't know that in this case either. Because if, if, if it was lower quality, then that's an issue, but if it was of same quality, then why, why didn't we have three options to pick from in the first place?
Are you talking about the materials list?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because it was specified to one, not?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I think this is a different conversation if the retrofit company didn't come up and honestly say they screwed up on it, and they were willing to offer us that ten thousand dollar refund.
But why did they come up and say it?
Because they knowingly, they knowingly admitted that they screwed up in the communication process.
And there was a building walkthrough at the end of August, and they didn't say a thing.
Well, that's their screw up.
Right.
But they admitted to screwing up.
Had I said nothing, would they have admitted? We don't know.
That's a bunch of what ifs, that I'm not, I'm not going to go down that road.
Right, so, that's what I'm saying, we approved a spec sheet.
So, there was-
They were in breach of contract with a spec sheet, so let's just have them put the right bulbs in. Then there's no issue, there's zero issue. Moving forward.
And we set a precedent that you have to honor the contract?
So, it could be a personnel breach of contract, it could be a contractor breach of contract. Where I've seen this in the past, we had some steam line fittings, they had to get changed out. Instead of holding anybody accountable, we just shelled out thirty or forty grand to get them changed. Why? Same thing, why? There's reasons that you have things in place to protect the district, at the end of the day, and that's what we're here to do. So, that's my opinion, I guess.
So, they never, they never come forward with them being the wrong bulbs until you confronted or brought it up to them, and then they?
Correct.
I don't think there, it wasn't like an official walkthrough, right?
They were in the building at the end of August, and walked through. Austin Electric was here too.
Not with school district personnel. We weren't invited yet, that wasn't-
I guess they didn't ask the guy that.
Yeah.
But if they did their walkthrough to check the work, they would have seen then that they had the wrong things installed, and they still never said anything.
Yes, that's correct.
So, the other thing to piggyback on this is, no matter what we decide, what does everybody think about retrofit signing a document saying that they installed everything properly, as per the spec sheet? Because we haven't looked at anything else to see if it's right or wrong. So, will they guarantee that they installed everything properly?
We could have them sign something on the contract, say, what they sign is, we admit to changing the bulbs, this, these are the correct bulbs, these are the wattage, everything of that's sort with the spec, and that's what we can have them sign, to protect the district.
Because I know, like, the outside-
But I'm talking about fixtures outside, so, right now, the egg shop lights don't work again. When I asked that question in my email last month, they said they put photocells on everything, and the problem was fixed, they're not on.
I drove by one night, they were on, I drove by the next night, they weren't even on, it was pitch black over there.
So, was he telling me the truth? Am I supposed to go out there and look to see if they put photocells on? No, we take their word for it, but they're not working, so we just paid for things that aren't working. Well, we haven't paid them yet, but essentially, they, he said it was fixed.
That's with anything in the building, though, that's any contractor that comes in the building, we trust that they're going to do a good job that we hire.
That's right, that's right, and then when we find out they're not being honest-
Are we going to do that to every contractor that comes in to this building? And say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do a walkthrough after the, after everything, like, we could have done, we could have done the same thing with-
Every job, every commercial job, yeah, we do a walkthrough, a final walkthrough.
Yeah.
You do a final walkthrough on a house with the owner and the building official.
Absolutely, but we're taking their word that they're signing off on that, that's on them, that they're signing off on certain things.
And we've proved they're in breach of contract.
I'll reach out and ask why they're not working.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Well, what are we thinking we'd like to do?
Well, I guess I, for one, would just accept their offer, if we want to add the attorney fees that have been defined as well, and move on with our life.
Is that something the retrofit company is willing to do, that's what we need to figure out as well? Because if they're not, then we need to talk something else.
It's standing off, or do you want more?
I, I guess I'm satisfied, but that's my opinion.
I don't know how I, I don't know what I think.
Me either. But I think the trust was broken, that's what I think.
We get down the rabbit hole, if they come in and replace the bulbs, that's affecting students, because-
They wouldn't be able to do it during the day.
Well, exactly.
They'd have to do it at nights, weekends, or holidays.
Yeah, but that's, I'm just saying it's going to affect, you know, the atmosphere in, in here.
Shouldn't.
With, well, if they're creating stuff when students should be in, in school, I, that's why I'm kind of for just taking their, their offer, and having them sign the document saying they installed the wrong bulbs, and let's be on our way. I mean, yeah, and then we have a precedent moving forward, that, hey, this is what the contract states, we need to kind of go forward with that.
But what precedent, if we do that, what is the precedent, you're saying, okay, what is the precedent? The precedent is that, if you can't get what you promised us, you can put what, something else in there. I'm just trying to think this through, we're, we're saying, the precedent I think we're setting is, if you can't, okay, we signed a contract with you, this is what you said you'd put in, if you can't put that in, if you can't do that, you can just put anything comparable in there and give us some extra money.
Normally, they would come with a request for a change order. I think that would be the normal process.
Okay.
But that didn't happen here, they didn't say or do anything.
So-
Okay, so-
But that's answering your question, I think.
So, everybody's got to remember too, they're throwing ten thousand dollars out there. It might cost them twenty-five, so they're going to throw ten, hoping we take ten.
I wonder how much each bulb costs?
I think the one said, the one paperwork said like thirty thousand was the cost of the bulbs. Where's that at?
I have a little concern, like with what Deb was saying, that they, they changed it out for something else, without our knowledge or approval of it. You know, what happens, like you said, if somebody else does the same thing then? You know, we don't, we don't want that to be able to happen, because, you know, we're told these are apples for apples, and I believe they probably are.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're not going to know that every time. And I don't know, do we have to worry about setting a precedence where they changed them out? And so, somebody else can say, well, you let TRC change the bulbs out?
Yep.
You know, theoretically, we're-
I don't know if that would ever happen or not, if they ever even, if anybody else would even know that.
That's, that's the problem, is, you know, I could do a walkthrough on the bulbs and all of that stuff, and I wouldn't know if it was done right. You know, unless you have somebody that's an expert that's going to go through with them and do a walkthrough, are you really going to know?
Yeah.
And we can hire, you know, you can hire a firm to do a final walkthrough, and do your inspections, you know? There's options out there to protect the district, just depends if you want to use them or not, you get into a big enough project, it's almost a must.
I'm all for that, I'm not against, like, any of, of this, like, part, I'm just saying, the project's done, we can go down the rabbit hole of taking everything back out, and having them come through, obviously, it's going to be past hours, and it's going to affect students' abilities and, and learning environment, and I don't want that to happen, so.
I don't understand why it would affect their learning environment.
Well, I'm just saying, if they're going to be working-
All the time, during the day.
Absolutely, but it's, they're, they're making noise, they're in the building, they're, and students are obviously going to, you know, go in and, and check it out, oh, what's, what's happening in the media center today, they're making a ton of noise, you know?
But if they're doing it after hours, when the students aren't here, then they wouldn't-
Who says they can do it after hours, though, that's my thing.
That's up to us, because they're in breach of contract, Cass, we're the dictators right now, it's our contract that they breached. We tell them, we tell them the stipulations, just like the attorney fees. We ask if they don't want to pay, well, then that's another discussion.
In their bid project, it says pricing is subject to a thirty-day window, given the current market material pricing on this project is thirty-seven thousand nine sixty-five seventy-four.
That's for all the material.
Not just bulbs. It wasn't just bulbs, because they did some fixtures too, right?
Yes.
I don't know either, I'm just, it's what I thought of. We were down this road with UNESCO, much bigger dollar amount, but things got done, weren't approved.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept their ten thousand dollar offer, and then we, I don't think we've paid them yet, and then we pay them and move on.
With or without attorney's fees?
Just accept the ten thousand.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Cass, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Okay, so. I'm going to make notes of this, Pat, you were no, Deb? Chad?
No.
No, Tim, no, okay.
Can I just say confused?
Undecided.
Well, and that's the thing too, I mean, because they are in breach of contract, we technically hold all the cards. I mean, so if we want a little longer to mull this over and think this through, they're just going to have to wait. If they had done the project correctly, we could have paid them, and we'd have been done.
Right.
Correct.
So, we can always bring this back again.
And the attorney said we, we are, they are in breach of contract?
Yeah, that was the first bullet point.
That's what I thought, yeah, I don't have that, I don't-
Number one, this is essentially a breach of contract dispute, and I'm not asking to push-
Do a lawsuit, or, no, but just like-
But that's the point, it's a breach of contract.
So, the option of having them come in and put the bulbs that they put in the spec, would be like us holding them to their-
Spec.
Spec.
Which they created.
Right.
Right. And the benefit of that would mainly be setting an precedent. I mean, the quality of the light is not going to probably be different.
Especially, you know, we're looking at doing, say, a bigger project down the line, yeah, that, you know, you need to follow the correct procedures, especially if something's going to be wrong, you need to say something.
Yep.
And bring it forward to do the right paperwork.
If the district would have rolled over for UNESCO, the taxpayers would have got hit with a one point two or three million dollar bill.
Eight, one point eight million.
So-
So, what if we ask the attorney if this is, is something that we need to be concerned about, setting a precedence on this or not? You know, the practical person in me finds it hard to make them come in and change out all them bulbs for, realistically, the bulb that's the exact same thing. You know, I don't want to be nitpicky, but if there's precedents that could be set by us doing this, that we may have to be concerned about, I want to know about it, because that's going to be a deciding factor for me.
Me too.
Yep.
How long do they expect these bulbs to last?
I think they were fifty thousand dollar bulbs in the spec sheet. So, if they're on, so you'd have to do the math, if they're on, I mean, every, every place is going to be different.
Oh, my God.
Every place is going to be different, Deb, so are these lights on ten hours a day?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Eight hours a day.
But can you give me a rough, like, huh?
Fifty thousand for a long time.
I was going to say, because otherwise, could we just get all the replacement, could they just provide us with the correct bulbs for all the replacement, and then whenever one goes out, we could put the other one, and then we don't have to buy any bulbs?
How many days?
You're going to keep all them bulbs down?
I don't know.
How many days are in the school year? How many days are in the school year, two? How many days are we in school?
One eighty.
One eighty, one eighty.
Yep.
Okay. So, if they're on ten hours a day, that's eighteen hours a day, they're eighteen hours a year. So, fifty thousand divided by eighteen hundred, twenty-seven point seven years, and the rating, the rating on those is fifty thousand hours, they'll still have seventy percent of their light coming out of them.
Okay.
So, that's not going to say they're going to fail in twenty-seven years, they could go for forty, they just might be a little dimmer.
Okay, so, that's not viable. Well, I just remember other times when they, I'd be waiting for a light to get fixed in my room, and they had to order more bulbs, so I was just thinking proactively, I don't know.
That's why these are so easy to sell, because the rebates and the maintenance costs are way less.
Okay, so, Pat would like us to go on to Morgan and ask about precedent going forward, ask a few questions. Jen, I'll get with you, probably after MBA, and we'll get a conference call set up with Morgan.
And then I suggest we find them answers, and we bring it back to the next meeting.
We can do that.
And I can email them to you guys first, like I did.
Sure.
It'll be the same thing, you know, what I emailed with the attorney.
It's the same thing, yeah, we have special meetings coming up, we can add this to one of the special meetings before we start, which you did planning. We can add this to one of the special meetings before we start strategic planning as well.
So, we need a motion to table.
Correct.
We don't want to change this.
I will make a motion to table the LED project update to next meeting. Assuming that you can.
The next meeting's our listening session.
Till the next, till the.
How about say November, well.
After you've had a chance to talk to the.
We have to, right, and we don't know Morgan's schedule of the course either.
Okay, so the first strategic planning meeting that we have as a board is November 9th. We have the listening session for the board members on the 25th. And then the next one we have is the 9th. I mean, if we have, I mean, that's Tuesday. We might not be able to get a hold of Morgan within a day or two. So, we could plan to bring it back for the November 9th meeting. Hopefully, she'd have something for us by then.
We could tell her, we really need it by then.
And if we don't, we table it till.
Then the next one is the 21st.
Yeah.
Yep.
Table to November 9th, is that what I hear?
No, not 9th.
Yeah.
Yeah, 9th.
9th would be the first strategic planning committee meeting.
You said the second strategic planning.
Sorry, the 25th of October is the board's listening session, which is Tuesday, which is going to give us enough time to get a hold of Morgan. The first actual strategic planning committee meeting is November 9th.
Okay, what's the second one?
Then the second official strategic planning committee meeting is the 21st of November.
Oh, I see, okay. I misunderstood, Jen.
Is that our normal school board meeting, the 21st?
So.
That's asking too far.
It should say.
No, the 15th is the board meeting, the 21st would be the following Monday. So, we would have a board meeting in there as well on the 15th in between the strategic planning.
If it doesn't happen on the 9th, we could just say it's going to come at the regular board meeting on the 15th.
Correct.
Which maybe is a better idea anyway, because once there'll be other people at the strategic. The whole committee.
The whole committee will be there for the strategic planning meeting.
So, let's just do it on the 15th, when it's.
Okay.
So, we'll table it next month's regular meeting.
Are you good with that, adding your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have a motion by Pat to table the LED project till the November 15th meeting. Is, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have the 2022-23 superintendent goals. So, everyone sent me their, some had five goals, some had six, some had six expectation for each, some didn't have anything. So, using the strategic planning guideline from MSBA, I was able to compile everything together and make one very easy to read packet with a header and all the expectations. So, tonight, we need to decide what the top, what the goal itself is going to be. Do we want to leave it generic or actually make a goal statement? We need to discuss the objectives, or excuse me, the expectations under each one that Jen, we would like Jen to meet in order to meet that goal. And we also need to decide how we are going to rate them. Do we want to do a number system? Do we want to do words? How do we want to do that?
Well, as far as how to rate the goals go, the number system to me is the best. Because if everybody's going to write something and one person has to try to put that all into, that's brutally difficult.
Yeah, it was not fun last round.
Yeah, so a number system, to me, is an overkill.
And what I sent you guys in the example, I actually pulled from the old evaluation, the ratings of, you know, one through five, one, you know, completely unacceptable, to five of outstanding. So, that's where that, you know, little coding system came from. Is everyone okay with using the number system?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Next we.
My first thought when I looked at this list, that we need to remember that Jen is not full-time. I mean, this is a ton of things. And a lot of those, as I went through, you know, quickly, I just did it today because I didn't have, haven't had a lot of time. But seems like a lot of things on there are things that are either already being done or, and/or a part of day-to-day things that she's doing already. To me, the goals would be something like, something more of a special, I don't know, for lack of a better word, special project kind of a thing. Not something that's a day-to-day expectation from her.
So, I'm going to look, right, you know, the very first thing we have is improving curriculum and class offerings. You know, the expectations, like I said, and we don't have to use every single one of these expectations. It's, we need to pick and choose a few. But it came down to, you know, develop and implement and try to plan and increase the number of students who meet or exceed state standards. You know, seek input from parents and students annually regarding curriculum, program offerings, um, as well as feedback. Bring back the opportunities, the outside classroom. The fifth and sixth grade camping trip doesn't happen anymore. Eagle bluff didn't happen. Um, you know, have PSEO offerings. Offer, you know, bring back the hands-on things, the artistic classes. Because we, I mean, we have steam, but we don't have art anymore. Um, you know, ensure that progress is being made on the curriculum cycle. Provide leadership for the educational program, staff development. You know, ensure equitable opportunities for students. Review and update current technology so that that's accessible. I mean.
So, is that the, is that the website, Teresa? Is that what you're thinking of in that last thing?
Um, I put the website, we had a bunch that fell under communications and community relationships. And the website is under that one.
Because I felt like you ensure that progress being made on curriculum cycle is being done.
Did we buy science curriculum?
Oh, we flip, we flip-flopped English and science.
But, so then we bought English?
We're, we have a, I could talk about that during my report. We're going to plan with it right now.
But what I would like to say about that is, okay, what I would like to see, okay, what we ran into before was we have this too broad of a goal. All right? And so, I don't want to put all of these things on there. I agree with you. But we have to have an actionable goal. Not, and what I would like to see, I don't want to just see the beautifully color-coded reading, math, what. I want more detail. I think that we deserve to know more detail. And I would like to have the superintendent present to us maybe twice a year. What is the curriculum we're reviewing this year? Who is involved in that? You know, what, what grade levels are involved in that? What curriculums are we looking at? Have we physically had them in the building? How do they fit into the state standards? To just look at a spreadsheet that says, we're going to do these things, to me, it's just.
Busy work.
That gives you a timeline.
Sort of, but we don't really know what, if we, are they really taught? Are they really looking at it? Who is involved in it? What grade levels? What are we actually looking at curriculum? And it doesn't, like, we don't have to have the books to look at. But I think we need more information to, to know our curriculum on this year. We are studying this. These five teachers were involved. We looked at this many curriculums. This is how it fits into our, you know, because I don't want, um, we, we don't want to miss things. And so, like, if you're going with your elementary curriculum, then are they also a part of what the middle school's going to do? And are we missing something in between this curriculum and that curriculum? Okay, so, so when it says something like, something about the curriculum, where was it in here? Ensure progress is being made on the curriculum cycle. Okay, well, how do we ensure that? How, right now, we, how could we say?
So, that would be like what you're seeing in a report.
Right.
Twice a year, whatever.
Right. Right, because you can't just say ensure. And then when we all come to evaluate, we're like one, two, three, or five. I don't know. I don't know, I saw a lovely colorful sheet, but I don't know. And so, like, maybe like a mid-year, say, I don't know. We'd have to set it up though, I think. It's important that we say, in January, we expect a report of what curriculums are being looked at, who's being, who's involved. You know, it doesn't have to be more than five, you know, four or five minutes. It's not, I'm not asking for the whole thing. I'm just asking for, and then at the end of the year, you know, it's like, okay, we continued working with English. These teachers decided this, this is being purchased. The, and you had, at one point, I'd said something about showing by the budget that we're working on the curriculum. Well, that feeds right into it. So, that at the end of the year, it's like, yes, we did buy English curriculum for this many people.
Or staff development funding, you know, because it's part of this.
Absolutely, I have staff development on here as, as an important one. So, under improved curriculum and class offerings, under like, ensure that progress is being made on the curriculum, I think we need a statement that says something like, superintendent will provide a brief report, uh, review.
Overview.
Overview. Okay, we'll provide a brief overview at the January meeting and the May or whatever, updating us on what's being done with curriculum this current year. I don't know, how do you guys feel about that?
Yes, and I plan to watch the video and slowly type all the way through this, yes. And kind of, like I said, if you guys look at the old one, that's kind of what they did here is that, you know, like I said, they had the overall goal. And then they had the, like I said, expectations underneath. And this is, yeah, where we ran into the issue last time was, we were expecting a strategic plan. Jen was thinking something else. So, unless we put down in black and white what we expect, there could be more miscommunication. That's why we need to list expectations under each one. And like I said, we don't have to have, you know, a 10,000-word sentence for the goal. We could keep it as basic as we did the last time. The goal is the strategic plan. The goal is this. And then these are the expectations we want met in order for that goal to be achieved. But no, some of these have quite a, a lot of them, some of them have quite a few, but there's no way that you can do all of them. But, like I said in the email, some are close enough in wording, they could be combined into one expectation.
And like Cass said before, or were you just going to say that prior to?
Well, again, yeah, what I was going to say is, why don't we take this document and do the same exact thing? What are our five top expectations in each expectation? So, we take, we print this out, we bring it back to our November's meeting? Because there is such a broad amount of stuff.
Do you know what I went through today? I'm just kidding.
Well, it should be copy and paste, but. I, I like the idea, but I, I, like everyone's saying, it's such a broad.
And that's why when I sent the email, you know, look at this.
Can I just throw this out?
Yeah.
Teresa and I are doing a lot of like things on the side. We're going to be calling attorneys, things like that. How about this? Would you guys trust the process if Teresa and I sat down one day in the office? We went through this, kind of going off with Deb. I know where she's going, educator at heart right there. I know exactly what you're saying and I like it. I was hoping you'd bring that up because it should be a broad overview. You guys should see something from me. You know, similar to what we did before, but a little bit more comprehensive. Right? Okay. Teresa, now, I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, just to save your time before the November meeting. Her and I could sit down, go through this. We could come up with some wording, send it to you early enough though, to say, how does this sound? Try to use everything in here, but in more of a one or two sentences.
And we could kind of do what Cass is, I mean, if we're going to go that route, we could let, like Cass said. I mean, so, you know, give you guys like a week, because I mean, it's MEA break. So, yeah, go through this again. Highlight, say, your four or five favorite things from this.
And we can.
That would then get a consensus throughout the board from now we have everybody's together. Now, we all like these. And then I'll put that together and that's what Jen and I can go through.
And we can, yep, we could put it on letterhead and we can always change it. But then we could say, these are the three or four goals, but then the expectations are underneath.
Correct, and honestly, we could bring this to one of, I mean, because you guys will have it ahead of time. So, the same thing with the LED project, we could, I mean, if everyone's okay with it and there's no changes, this would probably be okay to throw on real fast on one of the strategic plan meetings that, yep, we're good to go. If not, we'd know ahead of time. But throw around there, get her done and get it underway.
Is everybody happy with the five main topics? Do we?
I guess all that I would say is this, we just, we need to be sensitive to her being a part-time. Personally, I think three main ones is, is probably enough.
Three main goals?
Yeah.
We had five last time.
Instead of five.
We had five before. So, the goal topics are improved curriculum and class offering, human resources and hiring practices, ethical and included leadership and governance team, and then, yep, communications and community relationships and the district operations and finance.
Well, I think we need to get the what's under each goal or topic.
Narrowed down first.
That's got to be small.
Okay.
Yep.
I would say like even, even a couple or three under each one. I think in one.
Are we thinking three?
Maximum. I'd be fine with two. I'd be fine with two under each.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's educational wording that will be.
It's correct.
Do you want to use that?
It's like I said. Yeah, like I said, because some of these you could combine, you know, together. You know, review and update current technology. It goes along with curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the kids have to have.
And the website.
Exactly, so there are things that do cross over. So, they can be whittled down to grouping them together.
So, what we'll do is, we will highlight or in some way, let you know.
Yes.
What our top two of these would be under each category.
I would say three, just in case there's a tie.
Okay.
And then, yep, let me know. I will then condense it down again, send you guys all a copy of it so then you can see. And then, yep, I will meet with Jen, we'll schedule a workday and we'll go through.
We might go out to eat.
I think you better have lunch somewhere in there.
Yeah, we'll get together, get everything put together and it'll kind of, it'll kind of somewhat resemble the old ones. So, you know, it'll show like, you know, the one, two, three, four with the grading scale. So, then everyone knows where everybody's at. Jen will then know exactly what we are thinking. So, there's no the miscommunication. Okay, so if you guys, I know MEA break and a lot of people are leaving. Could we say Wednesday, the 26th?
I could do Thursday, the 27th.
Oh, that's right, you're on vacation and you're in the field.
But I got to keep my eyes open too, Dave.
Or Sunday, the 30th?
Yep.
Okay, so let's say Sunday, the 30th.
Teresa, do you have from me too then again?
Yeah. Because we're going to utilize what she gave. Did, did you send this to?
Yep, Jen got a copy of it too. Yep.
All right.
Reminder thrown in there?
Yeah, I'll put that down here, email reminder. You'll start getting those once strategic planning gets going too. You'll start getting those once her strategic planning gets going too.
I think I sent y'all three today.
Okay, if everybody's good with that plan, we will next move on to the strategic planning updates. Find my paperwork. As you guys saw, Jen sent you guys out the strategic plan timeline. Gary checked everything, said everything worked with him. Tomorrow, we had the listening session for the students, the administrative team, and the staff, both licensed and non-licensed. It was requested that we move the school board session and the listening session for the community until the 25th, because tomorrow night, there is a football game. That way, no one felt rushed and people will be able to attend. Per Gary's advice, he said the superintendent would be in charge of student, staff in the building. So Jen is working on those. As you guys saw today, there is a call-out on the school website and on Facebook, looking for. In Infinite Campus, looking for community taxpayer volunteers. I have had four reach out so far wanting to be on the committee. We need three more. So if anybody knows anybody, or anybody out in YouTube land would like to join, that would be great.
We can take up to seven community members.
Yes. We divided it out. Gary recommended that we have no more than 25. And we, as a board, discussed doing this all together, so that gives us seven. Jen and Erin would add nine. That leaves 14 open slots. So we said the same thing, seven from within the building and seven community members, so it'd be an even split. Also, the survey is open, and that is open until the 24th, and it ends at 8:00 a.m. Jen sent the email to the staff. We, as board members, we take the internal survey. The community also got the information for the external. And for those of you watching, if you do not have Facebook or don't want to take it online, there are copies in the, I don't know what. Entry.
And also in the office.
And in the office, that they can come in and get paper copies. So if, you know, you have a person that, say, doesn't have the email, doesn't have none of that, they can come in and do a paper copy. That does also have to be submitted by 8:00 a.m. on the 24th in order to be counted in.
Does anybody have any questions?
If not, you guys will start getting bombarded with emails from Jen, I, and Gary, probably here in the next week. Just updates and reminders, and we will make sure that the special meetings will be posted, like the board listening session, because we're all here. We will make sure it is posted as a special meeting and same thing all the way through. So. If not, we can move on to 9H, which would be the minutes from the September 20th, 22 meeting. There are a couple corrections.
I warned you all. I warned you. Pat, especially you, I warned. You're a clerk.
I clearly delegated that to you.
Y'all remember, I warned you. Go ahead, Teresa, we haven't thrown that in there.
Okay. One that was brought up, Deb.
Is E.
9E.
9E. Discussion and approval of community education director position. And it was written down here as $10,000 stipend, and that is not the decision we made. We had an hourly wage at $21 an hour with a max, a maximum of 40 hours per month. Which comes close to that $10,000, but it's not in a stipend form. It's in an hourly rate, so that we can see how it's being used and what the coordinator might need. So, so it's hourly wage, $21 per hour.
I hit under 9H, Mr., it's Mr. Lewison, not Mr. Lewiston.
Sorry about that.
And under 10, I'd, um, C, board reports, certified negotiators, had no report. I actually did give a report that we reached out to Mr. Hungerholt to ask.
Teresa, stop. Where are you? I'm sorry.
Oh, 10C number, oh God, that's, uh, seven, sorry.
Okay.
Roman numerals.
I'm like, where am I?
That report actually was given. We reached out Mr. Hungerholt, asking for negotiations, and he requested that we wait a little bit longer since school was just beginning. So.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, I didn't have anything else if anybody else did.
What I'll do is, I will repost these. That's what you have to do. Because you already had it in agenda minutes.
Correct. So we will bring those back with the corrections to the November meeting for the official approval.
Okay.
Next, we move on to reports. Student representative. We have a new one coming on, so I'm guessing Jen will be here probably next month.
Yes, yes. I told you she didn't have to this month.
Okay. Next, we have staff report, student services representative. Nothing? Okay.
I have a little bit. Yeah. I do. Trevor's not feeling real well. He's kind of getting what I have, but he's had it for a while. So, so here, take this. Just give me a second. And you're gonna have to jump in and help me. Pretty cool things going on in terms of missing assignments, missing assignments for athletes, credit checks, career readiness checks, RCD, discipline tracker, things like that. I know there's a lot in front of me right now, and I'll hold it up here shortly. But we've really started to dive deep into what we kind of suggested those positions be. You know, really start looking at the student life at Leroy Ostrander. And again, a quick apology for my coughing and stuff. I don't know what's going on, so bear with me here. But anyway, I know that Erin mentioned last week some of the things that they were, the, the things they were working on in terms of improving grades, improving communications, improving student attendance, you know, the whole gamut, again, like I said, student life here. And so Trevor is gonna present to you today on a couple of things, but let me kind of show you. This is kind of cool. One of the biggest things we do here is the RCD model. You know, we're nationally recognized for that. A lot of that has to do with Erin promoting it, but then the staff embracing it. So every week, and I might hand this off to Erin, this, maybe I will right away.
Okay.
Because you'll.
All right. So with the RCD, that's how we, when you deal with the student and behaviors, I've explained before. But what Trevor keeps track of, and these, this doesn't really give us a, the percentages are much better. Because if a teacher uses RCD in their classroom, and it, and it, they do it well, and the kid doesn't leave the classroom, then Trevor doesn't know that, so he can't, and we haven't really found a good way of the teachers, like, when you do it, do you send down? We just haven't really had a good way of reporting the, the positive they have in their classroom. So the numbers will be better. But he, what Trevor keeps track of is, A, there's two reasons the kid will get sent to the office. They tried the RCD and the student just wouldn't do it. Then, you know, or refuses to work with the teacher, then they go down to Trevor. Or it's a safety issue. So any of those two reasons, you send down to Trevor, then Trevor goes through, first thing, he, then he goes through the RCD in his room or whatever he needs to do down there. Then he follows up with the teacher and gets there, did they try it? Did they get through the RCD? Did they not try it? So what he keeps track of is, when they come to him, first thing goes back to, did you really, did you try RCD? Okay, if they tried it, they, you know, they get a, you know, that's a good thing that they tried it, and then why didn't you get through it? Because when our PLCs, we practice scenarios and we talk about, you know, if I'm struggling with Pat and Dave's not, how, you know, working together and how do we make those connections with the kids? So what Trevor keeps track of is, when he sees the kids, if the teachers try the RCD, if they don't try it, then he does it. And then what plans they come up with in order to be successful back in the classroom. So that Trevor tracks all that stuff now of, of the discipline and RCD. So then he can report back to the teachers, hey, we had 83% of you tried it, 17%. And most of the time, it's where a teacher, and they even admit it, is they just kind of lost their temper, or they were frustrated, and they just couldn't get through it themselves type of stuff. So that's gonna be just, like I said, we practice monthly, things like that, staff fill in. So that's what Trevor keeps track on the, on the RCD. So, and I'll talk about that a little bit in my report, what's going on.
Another thing we're working on is the missing assignment piece. We feel that's just a critical kind of life skill, you know, and, and when you're doing a secondary kind of exposure to an assignment at home as an example, that just helps you along anyway academically later on in the classroom. And so one of the things we're working on is, and I can't show you this because there are student names, that's why you don't have a copy of things. But weekly, again, the student services team has done such a nice job with this. What is happening is, an email is sent off to teachers reminding them, hey, if you have missing assignments, let me know per student. Correct me if I'm wrong on this. And basically, that gets generated into a database, which creates these spreadsheets to say, hey, Jennifer Backer is missing two assignments this week from social studies. I'm gonna talk to her. So our homeroom teachers talk to that person, talk to me, my homeroom teacher will talk to me, or our student services team will talk to me. And, and then, guess what? I'm kind of like, hey, I better get my stuff in. So then the next week, when the report is generated, I have no homework missing. That's what we're hoping for. You know, having, granted, it's more than that. It's about discussions. And, hey, do you need mentor? Do you need after-school programming? Hey, I can meet you before programming. Let's you and I, Teresa, go up and talk to our social studies teacher. Maybe she'll meet with you early one day to help you out. Maybe you're not getting something. But it's those preventative skills we're trying to help with too. So that's another thing. We also break it down, even in our athletic realm. So, so the coaches are aware, you know, for Minnesota State High School League reasons, we have to know too, you know, where grades are at with our student athletes, being a part of that organization. But we know when missing assignments are happening, guess what? Their grades are going down too. And also, so is their knowledge base. And so let's prompt them and help them. They have a lot on their plates anyway as athletes. So let's, let's help them that way too. So there's that. Did I miss anything with that?
No, that's pretty good.
It was pretty good. I thought it was pretty good.
That was really, that was really great.
It was really good.
That was great.
Okay, anyway, this one's kind of cool too. This one's kind of my baby. I love this one. You know this one. So our credits and career readiness. So the student services team will often meet with students. Again, let's say they meet with Erin Hungerholt. And they do this so far, I believe they've done it with all the juniors and seniors, right? Both. Hey, where are you at in terms of your transcript? Let's pull it up. So that means when you're pulling up a transcript, you're not looking at just the current grades or midterm grades or quarter-end grades. You're looking prior, you know, maybe last year's grades, the year before. Is there improvement? Is there some decreasing, whatever it is? But start talking about those things. What can we do to improve? Show where the students' weaknesses are, strengths are, and so on. So, so we're looking at their current credits, of course, based off grades, but then their projection, will they graduate on time? We want to make sure they do and make sure their class schedules are identified as such. Now, part of that conversation also is about, hey, I'm looking at your classes and courses, and also projecting what maybe you want to do in your life. So that career readiness is being talked about right now. So it's kind of fun, like, do you plan to go to a college or university? What do you plan, you know, to do there? Like, some kids are elementary ed, law enforcement, John Deere tech, business, cosmetology. Pretty cool stuff they're talking about. So once we start knowing that data, we can start sending kids to these college fairs that houses these careers. You know, and having those kind of things. Or bringing in our local, like, we've talked about this many times, bringing in our local business folks and have them talk to, if we have a cosmetologist in town, have her come here and talk to this student, or the five students, whoever it is I want to do. So this data mining we're doing is only gonna help in the long run, but we wanted to expose that to you right now. Again, in the infancy stages for this year, but this is where we want it to be. Anytime you want to see it, come let us know. It's kind of fun to talk about. So I told Trevor I'd do this report for him.
And we'll eventually be doing sophomores right around probably end of first semester. And then freshmen, we're gonna do, excuse me, I think I'm.
I know.
I should have said so. Close to Joe. We're gonna actually do something a little bit different. We're gonna do registration with the freshman this year. I do do the registration nights with the parents, but we're gonna start this in the spring, we're gonna do actually the registration with the freshmen as they start choosing. They don't get a lot of choices in 10th grade. Let's start talking about this up earlier. So event, our goal is to have all four grades talked to, planned out for their career, so. That was very, very good, Jen. Awesome. That's the best report.
Better sanitize your hands.
Thank you, guys. Do we have a staff report this month? Enough either, or you want to stand up and talk?
Actually, it was this. It was this.
Okay.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yes.
All right, next, we have principals report.
All right, Monday, staff development day, we will be doing, we continue with our RCD training. Our site team will be meeting, and that's a group that can, we kind of go over how's the beginning of the year going, any issues we need to tackle together as a, as a group, time for curriculum writing. And then we're gonna have a presentation on testing. We had teachers go to a conference, and we might have found a better way to, we're using FastBridge right now, as kind of our, looking at our growth of our, we give it three times a year, looking at the growth. It gives us a little bit better information than MCA test, because that's at the end of the year. But we believe we found something in IXL that even allows us to do even a better job with it. So we have three teachers that'll be presenting to the staff on that and maybe switching how we test and monitor and try to get our kids some extra help. So that's, I'm looking forward to that. So that's kind of cool. Speaking of RCD training, Larry Thompson will be here November 14th. He'll be in the classrooms eight to three, and then there, from three to five, he will be teacher presentation and review with our staff from three to five. With those things. So looking forward to Larry being back in our building. Then talking to Dawn down at the art, lady that owns the art building shop, whatever. She's out of town right now, but when she gets back next week, we're gonna have, we're gonna start talking about how she can be involved with the school. What does her art and acting look like in getting in to the school? And then probably after that conversation, I don't know what her degree is, potentially after that conversation of where do we go with, my thought is probably in January reposting our art position. But I'm gonna run some ideas, see what her thoughts are of bringing it back in the building, if maybe she's able to do it, I don't know. But we're gonna start those discussions about art and acting and things like that of getting it going to school.
May I interrupt you?
Huh?
May I interrupt you?
Yep.
Could we post art sooner than that? Because I think a lot of students graduate early December. And if we, we might.
That's fine, we can post whenever.
I mean, I think it'd be better to get it posted prior to that. I think December is a big time for graduations. And so if we can have it posted prior to that, then if we have somebody who's interested, just fresh out of graduation.
We might have to get creative of what their position would be this year.
We can be creative.
Okay.
That's what art is, right?
Exactly.
The only reason I ask is for the, you know, the only reason I say is like, we get somebody they want to start like in January.
Yeah.
All of our master's schedules are done and stuff, so we'd have, if we wanted to hire them and hold on to them.
But we'd have, you could do elementary.
Yeah, we, we have STEM now, so if we pulled him, he would be short.
Is there something else?
We could add, I mean, we could, we could add it.
But he doesn't do all elementary grades every week.
No, art never did either. It's the same schedule as art. Like, first grade gets Monday every week.
Well, let's have every week.
Well, we, I mean, we could add art. They could use STEAM and art. But I'm just saying, if we post it and get somebody that.
Because then STEAM can do more of the other things, and the art teacher can do art.
That's right. I'm just saying, if we might have to hire somebody, but be creative for seconds.
We could be really creative.
If you guys are okay with that, I'm.
I'd be okay with hiring the art teacher.
We're short anyways, all of them, like so.
Yeah, right.
Perfect. Nope, I'll get that. I'll do, I'll probably just do December 1st.
Yeah.
I'll just post it. I'll get that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry I interrupted, but I wanted to jump in there.
Um, I'm excited about, we have Lorraine Prindle. You guys approve. She's our EL teacher. And, and her, other part of her job is to helping with interventionists. And since our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, two are brand new. One's been here for a year. And that's, and so she's going in there because Lorraine, one of her strengths is test prep, data collecting, stuff like that. So she is in those classrooms, starting second quarter, she's gonna be in there like 30 minutes a week, just helping them, teaching them how to do those things, and then doing it with them. So I'm excited about getting her in those classrooms and helping with the interventionist plus the test prep stuff in those classes. Kind of, you guys were already talking about some field trip stuff. We've already started field trips this year, starting to see a lot of things come back. Austin's actually been much more accepting, reaching out, I don't know what the right word is, but they've been reaching out more, inviting, you know, getting outside Austin schools in for the Austin Nature Center, the canoe mobile. And last week, Nick just picked dates for Eagle Bluff this year.
Great.
So all those things, and I heard you guys talk, something, camping trip, I think I heard. None of the schools do that one anymore. What we did last year was, we did like that survival day to kind of replace it. But we can always look at redoing some of those lines. So just want to let you know, those things are starting to come back now, which is exciting for the kids, so. Kind of on the teaching thing, last week, we had our admin meeting and we talked about student teachers. We are kind of, Winona State always been the big partner of who we contact, but through SMEC, we also use Grand Canyon, St. Mary's, and we get South Dakota State usually through the Ag Department. I believe, I'm almost sure we're having one second semester with Tiffany. So we are working on putting our name in the hat of, if anybody wants to come this direction for teaching, pretty much in anything, we are willing to take any student teacher. So I just put our name in for that last week as well, as I do every year. We had fire prevention week, and we had our last practice fire drill in the fire department. They were in the building, watching how we do it. They were very happy with how we conduct those. And we're trying to get something set up to do a full Alistre again in the spring with fire EMTs, the county, and stuff like that. So we're, talked to Caleb, and we're thinking maybe move that and do that one in the spring sometime. Some things we've been talking about with our CNA program, I just found out, and maybe I'm just slow on this one, but LSS, I believe, is giving signing bonuses to their workers, so I'm gonna pass that information. We had talked about getting, you know, something going for the kid, the students that take their CNA program and get their certificate. So I'm passing that inform, information along to Emily, so she can share with her students. So that's kind of, they work with LSS, they get a signing bonus right off the bat. I think it's a thousand dollars. Something along those lines of 500 right away, and then 500 at a later date. So trying to really build that program, they will be doing their final, there's eight of them. They have their final testings coming up for their certification coming up here in the next week or two. So excited, first year down at Mayo Clinic went really well, so excited to do that. We had our first ECFC event, I believe. There was, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was over 80 people. Sound like a really cool thing that I believe Tanya and Amy and Ryan. and Amy and Ryan put on for us, so that was awesome. I think they are looking at just doing events this year, and then hopefully we'll get into the, the classes at some point, so I think that's what they're planning on, so. Interviewing, plan, I plan is to interview community ed and para positions on Monday. We are short on the para end, and I'll explain, that's kind of been a problem in other areas, as I'll explain in a little bit. Just for your information on some repurposed rooms that we continue to try to really make our building more efficient in utilizing our space, you're aware that we made the old weight room into a health classroom, the office right across the hall in kind of the equipment room, we took down a bunch of shelving, we're going to be moving the PE teacher into that room, so they'll have their equipment in there, and they'll, we took out shelving, they got tons of space, because right now it's in the girls locker room, but we figured, you know, let's say we ever have to get a new fire teacher that's not a girl, we can't.
Where is it, where is it set?
We're making an office, it's an only, it's the, you know where the.
Stage.
Right by the stage, the microphone and stuff, the amplifiers and stuff are in there in that little room. So that room is becoming, and that stuff will still stay in there, but that'll become the new PE office. And then all of the PE teacher stuff will be in there, and then their classroom is right across the hall, so it makes a little bit more sense on the usage of that. And then regardless of female or male or whoever the fire teacher is, that office can always be the PE office. The, so, when that happens and we move the PE teacher out of the office, which used to be storage in the girls locker room, we're going to put all the volleyball, is going to move into the girls locker room and be stored in there, all the football stuff is stored in the boys locker room, which then our next, what we need to do, what our goal is then, on the other side of the stage is another equipment room, we like to make more area and space for Cardinal Kids and Cardinal Care to store their stuff and get some of that stuff out of the hallway and stuff. So we're trying to give them more space by moving everything. So, that's not done yet, but the other stuff is kind of one piece at a time. So we're just trying to, you know, get stuff out of hallways, give people their own storage areas, so we're not mixing and matching and doing all those things. So, so far, so good on that, just wanted to keep you up to date. The old concession stand right up here has now become the training room, so that means the trainer, when he comes here, he has his own room to take kids in, visiting teams can use the, if they need it for training, boys and girls can share it equally, we have all the tape and stuff in there. The only thing that we don't have, and it's kind of right around the corner, is the ice machine, otherwise it's, it's a train room for anybody to use, so we thought that was a good idea. And like I said, the next project will be that, getting Cardinal Kids and Cardinal Care more room for their stuff in that hallway, because that's a lot of stuff in that hallway. They really don't have their own storage space, so the storage room is actually just the first door into the kid, so. Just letting you know on some of those things that are moving around with those things. And the last thing, I just kind of want to clear up a few things, crossing guards. It's been a, it's been a work in process, I'm not going to lie, the, the problem we were running into is, we haven't had students do it for quite a few years, that doesn't mean we're not going to try to bring them back, but for now, I've been trying to schedule, the only people I have available are paras, and we're short paras, so what I've been working with, we've got a couple volunteers, in paras, we put a schedule together a few weeks back. The problem we ran into is anytime anybody was sick, or if John pulled a para to drive, then that position wasn't covered. So, we went back to the drawing board, I moved a few paras around, I think all of our paras are now coming in the morning, because we have to cover playground, we have to cover, I stole Chris's out of the lunchroom, she's mad at me until I get a new one, to get those things covered. So, we've had a schedule, but we didn't account for if somebody was absent or got pulled for something else, we didn't have a sub. So right now, I have a schedule made that has a person at each space, plus a substitute that they call, plus they let Carrie Lowe know that they're not going to be there, so then Carrie would be a sub if she's not already scheduled, or find somebody else. So we're, we are trying, it's just difficult when you don't have enough bodies. And like this morning, we had two people out there, Eileen was at the 14, I was actually at the corner, because Wendy got pulled to drive for John, so then I was out there this morning on 56 and 14 at that end this morning. So we did have two people covered this morning, trust me, it was cold out there and I was not dressed appropriately, so.
He wasn't happy when he came in.
Yes, I was a little grumpy this morning.
Boy, that statement could have been taken way longer.
Yes.
We were just warm enough.
Yes, that was true. So, but, we are working on it, it's, I hope it is, it's, like I said, the problem we're having is just not enough bodies to fill, and I think we have it now, and my hope is when we hire a new para, that person will go into that rotation, so now that's one more body we have in that rotation, so we have room for if anybody's gone. If we get multiple paras and we like more than one, I might come to you guys and ask you to add another para to our staffing, because we, I feel we are short, we haven't really come and asked for adding one, because we have a lot of challenges going on and stuff like that. So, hopefully everything goes well, and hopefully we get that taken care of, yes.
I have a question, and that is, why are we not using students? We have like this, this, what are those kids?
Oh, the National Honor Society, the leadership group.
And the leadership.
I, I have brought it to their, the advisors, and Carrie is going to do a survey on some of those things. We haven't had students for quite some time.
How long is quite some time?
I know before COVID, I'm, I'm not sure, we might have had them maybe the year before that.
We did. Yes, I remember proving a tip.
But we started getting to where we were less and less kids, and then we started covering it with adults anyways, because they weren't coming. And Carrie can probably give you more data on this, because she's the one that's been doing it. We, we are going to look at it, the only thing, my caution is Minnesota's safe school, safe routes to school, they don't recommend using students at uncontrolled stops, which 14 would be uncontrolled, because there's not a stop sign right there. Now, that doesn't mean, my thought is, I'd like to have adults and kids out there, if we're going to get kids back, that way if somebody was gone, we'd have enough coverage. So, Carrie's working on the fifth and sixth grade, the advisors are working on getting some surveys out to see if we can get enough kids to help out the adults.
How many paras do we have on the payroll? I tried to figure it out in my head and I couldn't, I kept coming up with a different number every single time.
I can tell you, we have 60 non-licensed staff, because I just submitted a report today on that.
No, because we can't use them.
I wouldn't count the cards, I was, yeah, I wouldn't count the cards room.
Less than, less than 10, less than 10, right?
Trudy. Chris. Or is, or not Chris, um, oh. Oh, yeah, the kids let me know that John, yeah, Barb's down in the kitchen. I can see your face, but I can't think of her name. They had Eileen.
She's part-time only, she's like three, four hours.
She lives down?
Crystal, but Crystal's in the cards room.
Karen Miller.
Karen, that's it.
Cards room.
Cards room, okay.
So you know, some schools got, you know, they'll roll out like a, a stop sign or a crossing sign, you know, that they can set in the middle of the street. Can we not do that, because it's State Highway 56 in the state, don't let you, are those signs only usable if you're in on a town street?
And we brought that up at the.
When we went to that city presentation.
And they told us, what did they tell us, we had to put a note on there of.
Please look into this for us, we're very concerned about 14 and 56.
Help us on that.
You know, oh, we asked about stoplights or flashers, both of those.
Reducing.
Signs that say pedestrian crosswalks, there was one other thing.
Was it reducing the speed limit?
Yeah, like, I think, I think I even put rumble strips on the note, but just something to slow things down, lights, so we did ask that question. They said they were going to gather all the questions and data they received from that community meeting a couple weeks back, and then send that out, so.
I'm assuming they, I'm assuming they'd probably make us purchase it, I'm assuming.
We just cannot not have somebody there. We just, we can't, because, ugh. I mean, it's scary, it's scary enough with an intent, with somebody, because the, you know, it's a busy area. So it's scary enough with an adult or a high schooler. I hear what you're saying about not having, like, if we had the Leadership Academy students, they're all senior high, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes. And, and then if you had one adult, and then you had that, would that be acceptable to the safety?
See, that would, that would be my goal, is have a, have an adult and kid there, because, like I said, the problem, we had, on paper, it looked great, but the minute someone's sick, the minute John needed somebody to drive, then.
Yeah, well, and you have to plan for that, because it's going to happen.
So, without, without knowing that, you know, we had, my goal is if we could have two people at each spot, likely that they're both gone, probably, you know what I mean? And then you'd at least have one.
Yeah.
So, they're working on the kid part right now. I got the para schedule, like I said, we have a sub, Carrie had, they're supposed to let Carrie know if they can't make it, we have a whole system they're supposed to follow if they can't make it, so we can get somebody out there.
Okay.
And we have two volunteers too, that we really appreciate helping out with.
In the afternoon, in the afternoon, yeah. So we are, it's not that, I, trust me, I, we've gone safeties forever, and I, and I truly believe in it, it's just it was some things we just didn't foresee. And people can, I mean, I hope we got it fixed, but my goal is, like I said, I'd love to have a kid and an adult, at least two people at each spot.
Right.
Is my goal.
That'd be great.
So, right now, like I said, on paper, it's covered with adults, adults know what to do if they're absent, if they get pulled somewhere else, we have backup.
Okay.
They need to let the proper people know, so we can get out there, so.
Okay.
So, like I said, I was out there this morning, obviously I need to put a hat, gloves, and.
That's right.
And Carrie and I are subs on that list too, just so you know.
What?
So Erin and I are subs on that list too, so there's more than just paras on there to sub, we are as well. So for example, Erin went out there today, Chris needed help in the kitchen, so I went with her in the kitchen to supervise, you know, so we, we have kind of a system that way too.
And I'm hoping everything works out next week, and we get everybody hired and all these physicians hired, we have more people to put in spots.
And that was one, Christian, I have, and Jen, this might cover you too, where are we at with the interviews for the community director and payroll? Is that in yours?
Community ed director is Monday.
Monday, how many applicants do we have? Jen, was there four, did we end up with more?
No, we had, we had three and three, three para, three community ed. I think we had a problem with one on each of not being able to come. So I think I have at least two and two scheduled.
Okay, so the ones that weren't able to make it Monday, are they coming a different day?
We're trying to figure out what day to do, because I have committee, I mean, the committees available that day, so that's why I was going to try to do it Monday, because I don't have kids. I don't know, I don't know, honestly don't know.
Still Jen's thunder.
You did.
Sorry, so, yeah, so we do have, so I think we at least have two and two. Two and two, possibly three and three, but for sure, two and two.
Okay. Next we have Jen.
Okay, I'll try rush this time.
Don't you dare!
But next time I won't, next month I won't have. Okay, payroll position, I'll start with that. We, we have interviews scheduled for Tuesday, we have two interviews, we have two inquiries, and one of the inquiries is planning to send the paperwork prior to MEA. The other inquiry, I sent back responses to questions I have not heard from her.
To, in addition to the two applications?
Yes.
Okay. So we could have up to four.
Yes, so up to four, but so far only two are scheduled interviews. So there's that, I'm sorry, and that's Tuesday.
Okay.
Did I say Tuesday? Okay, that's Tuesday. Friendly reminder, we do our staff spotlight every month, Carrie Olson will be the November staff spotlight, so I'll be sending that off to the, at the end of this week, all her information. Erin kind of talked a little bit about this, but emergency drills, don't, don't forget that we do by law have to perform five fire drills, five lockdown drills, and a tornado drill each year. As Erin said, he's working on scheduling Alice drills this spring. If you guys would like to be a part of that, see it from a distance, you are welcome to as board members, we, we'd love for you to see us in action, it's a pretty cool thing to see. So there's that. I hate even talking about this, but since Erin had to talk about how cold he was, weather, please be sure to check your emails, Infinite Campus, Facebook, we try to hit all our local media outlets, local school outlets, but I also contact a variety of radio and TV stations too. So be sure when you feel there might be inclement weather coming some evening or in that morning, we're probably already talking about it and ready for it to go. I do send an email off too, to our staff, so they're well aware around that six o'clock time. Calendar of events, please do not forget, this is mainly for the people watching tonight, October 20th through 21st is MEA, we do not have school, and then also Monday next week is our staff development day, so we're going to be hitting curriculum hard and things like that on Monday. The file, so next week also, Erin and I and Mr. Bly are going to do another security walkthrough. We check doors, windows, make sure from our first list, everything is completed, and, and some other things are added to the list when it comes to security, so we're going to continue to that, to do that, and I'll update you regularly on that as well. Couple reports have been due lately to the Minnesota Department of Education, one of them is the Assurance of Compliance for Every School District. This is, this report identifies things such as mandated reporter training, all the documents that I have to submit, that I promise I'm going to submit to MDE, I have to check off those forms, our compliance requirements checks, things like maybe the Fair Housing Act, do we know what that is in terms of administration? Actually, he's our homeless liaison, so he does know. The Age Discrimination Act, things like that, that we have all of these things set up in our office and manage it on a day-to-day basis, and so that report was finished today. I'm a little concerned, because they have added, they added one, two, three, four, five, six more items that we have to report out every year, so that's kind of hard to do, but we get it done, we get it done, but it's, it's a lot. So, but if you ever want to ask any questions about, let me know, come on in, I'll, I'll show you. Last week, you may recall, we sent out a Great Things Happening, I just wanted to touch base on this really quick, related to the communications piece. I put down just a variety of communications avenues that we use here in the district, but as I said in that, please reach out if you're hearing from community members or yourselves, if there's other communication avenues you'd like to see utilized, like, or do differently. So for example, you may recall, the last couple years, Erin and I were doing kind of the coffee talks at noon once a month, we just weren't getting the following that we wanted, so then we talked to Axel, and now we're doing monthly videos, so that it's out there and people can watch it whenever they want. But if you have other creative avenues, avenues, please let me know, we're very open to those. Also, want to really emphasize what Erin and I kind of talked about a little bit with Student Services, I want to look at more comprehensive, you kind of, as we're talking about my goals too, but the student success, how do we reach student success? How do we research it in order to gain it? You know, it's on us as adults to do that, to find that success for students. So, I wanted to throw this out, and this is something else too, I'm, I'm going to be Teresa tonight, I'm giving you a bunch of homework tonight too. I'm going to steal her thunder, but some homework tonight, Teresa. Think of, look back at this document that I sent you, okay, the student success piece of it. So far, we have, and these are just kind of the big picture things, such as referral to social worker, referral to Student Services Department, referral to special education, county officials, school nurse, all those referrals, we have RCD, which is a huge component, AMPM intervention time, weekly missing assignment procedures, which we talked about tonight, career and college readiness stuff, targeted services, win time title, the student mentors, student services office, things like that. If there are other things that you're hearing, I love stealing ideas from other districts, give them to me, and I'll do the research. You come up with the idea, but I'll do the research, that's not a problem, but we want to continue to build what we're doing, what we showed you tonight, and then what I posted, they go hand in hand, so I, if I could hear from you, and you can just send me the email and I'll report out, you know, during this whole time, but I'd love to hear from you, what else do you think we can do legally to support students' academic, behavioral, emotional health?
When you do the walkthrough for safety.
Yep.
In addition to it, just, you're with the maintenance.
Yes.
I'm understanding there's been some issues with the non-gender bathroom, and whether that's been. I understand there's been some issues with the non-gender bathroom and whether that's been flushing appropriately?
We heard about that tonight at our building and grounds.
We believe it's, we believe it's taken care of, but we're going to double check.
Okay. So just, I'm thinking you said you're going to do a walkthrough. Let's make sure that's on there.
Yep. Actually, you know, we're going to actually talk about it tomorrow instead of wait till next week.
I think that's a great idea, actually.
But yes, think about student success in your view, you know, as a parent, as a grandparent, as a high school graduate, college graduate. What, what does student success mean to you? I'd love to hear from you because we can research that and maybe do some fun things. Otherwise that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next we have school board committee reports and comments. First up is community ed ECFE. We have not met yet, but we had great, I know my kids participated in almost everything they had this fall and there was a great turnout. So thank you for Leann. Even though we didn't have a director, she still pulled it together and got some classes out for our students to do. Hopefully with the community ed director being interviewed, we'll have someone here pretty quick that we can get working on the winter classes.
Chad?
Next, finance committee. We also didn't meet.
You will be though.
When?
With the audit and all that fun stuff coming up.
Oh, that's right.
So be ready. An invite will be coming.
Okay. Next meet and confer. We also did not have one. MSBA liaison, which is myself. You guys get all the emails, updates from MSBA. And now that we've kind of pushed off a little bit with the expectations and Jen and I will meet later. MSBA did a really good webinar regarding superintendent goals. If you guys have a chance, they do it virtually. It's just an hour. You don't got to be on camera. So you can just have your microphone off, video off, but it was really good.
It was really good.
Yep.
So seeing how we do have a little bit of time break in here, if you guys want to listen to that and think of something else in the meantime.
There's one more date that it's going to be live.
Yes.
And then when that's done, and by live, you just can listen to it. You don't interact on this particular one, this webinar. But there's going to be one more date that's live. I can't remember what it is, but I'm going to be, it's when I'm on vacation, Wednesday, something. But anyway, then they're going to post it as a video that we can watch at any time. It's one hour long and it's good information. So when you get out of the field.
This Thursday at 9:00 AM.
Thursday at 9:00.
Yep. Just got an email this afternoon.
So if you have a chance to listen to it, that was, it was really good. Barb Dorn did it and it was really helpful.
Yep.
Minnesota State High School League. Okay. Scholarship committee? Okay. Certified negotiators. Like I said, last month, I reached out to try to get something going with Mr. Hungerhold's contract and he requested that we wait a little bit, especially with school starting. I reached out again at the beginning of this month, October, since now we were at 15 weeks since the committee has met to negotiate contract. Jen replied back that Mr. Hungerhold is not available now till the end of November. So that actually puts us now at almost five months since the committee has met.
We can see what we can do earlier.
Okay. Next is non-certified negotiations.
We have three dates out to do the next, we're just waiting to hear back on a, on November 1st, 2nd or 3rd.
I'm Chrissy.
Yeah. And then we'll negotiate that next contract.
Next we have SMEC. Dan sent out a long email this month, so I just highlighted a few things. SMEC's audit has been completed. They are now starting the process to look at the LTFM. The ALC has 50 full-time students and 30 far, excuse me, 30 part-time students in credit recovery. Our Level 4 reset is full with 12 and our Level 3 programs throughout the consortium is serving 115 students. And then I will reach out to Trevor and remind the student services of this. SMEC has also started planning for the career day for juniors and seniors this May that will be held at the SMEC building. They said last year they had a lot of, a lot of people show up, a lot of businesses. The kids had a really good time with it. Next is district policy. Yes?
It's the same old stuff you guys get every, every month.
Yep. There was, yeah, there was the 534 that had to do with, you know, about the meal plans, thing like that. Committee actually opted to table this and pull it from the board agenda. They wanted to reach out to Chris and Leann.
Leann and Erin. Leann and Erin.
Oh, Leann and Erin, but I thought we said, Chris too, maybe not. Oh, I guess you're getting off the hook with homework.
Sorry, you're off the hook.
We were, we were, Jen and I, we discussed this at SMEC. We brought it up too, is how do we, you know, what is the protocol for say students that have, because we don't, we don't do the lunch shaming thing, but it's, you know, say an account is, you know, say $20 in the hole or hundreds of dollars in the hole. We need to have something of what do we do as a district? So it was going to be questions, I thought it was going to be Chris, but apparently you're off the hook. So Leann and Erin will have some homework to do.
And then I sent the committee. I hope you guys got them.
Yep.
All those links for other school districts, what they're doing too.
Yep.
Because it bounced back once to me and I thought, I think I added too much, but.
Yep. I got it come through. So that, the policy committee will look at again next month with some input from Erin and Leann.
We can tell you what we've done in the past, but I don't know if I've seen a policy, but we, I can tell you what we've done.
Is there a way the kids can figure out what their lunch account balance is? Because we get asked daily by several and we don't see any of that.
Can the kids?
Like can they go on into campus and see what's in there or?
Can they, I see, as a, I know as a parent, I can. I don't know, does anybody know about the kids?
I'm asked daily by several, what's my balance? I don't see none of that. Kitchen staff, we have none of that.
Okay.
And I don't want it, but I want to be able to tell the kids where to go.
So they should log into their Infinite Campus, like if they got the app on their.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the students are able to see what they have.
Okay. So that might be a good thing. Don't double, just double check that we can do that and just, you know, let the kids know that they can't check their own.
I wish my kids would do that. When I check, it's like negative 50 of all occurred, Chris.
Yeah, Chris.
It's not the good food.
Next is systems accountability. We have not met. And last is buildings and grounds.
And we did meet. We met right before this meeting. We worked on prioritizing some, some needs as far as the building and stuff. One of the main things is that we want to get those key fobs changed and get rekeyed, those, all the outside doors. Erin or someone is going to check with custom alarm about the, the actual alarm on those doors. We talked about water softener, water treatment being kind of a, maybe a year or two, kind of a priority. We're going to work on researching that. There's some windows that need to be replaced up here on the second floor and the, by the locker rooms. Those we'll probably work on trying to get, get pricing. It's kind of, windows are hard to, to get right now. So we might get something ordered early for next year. New scoreboards are a big priority. Those, we're afraid that they might go out sometime during a basketball game. Apparently they're kind of unreliable. And the other gym item is the small gym floor materials getting in really bad shape. So those are some projects that we're working on now for prioritizing.
Cast him.
Summers it all up. I guess, yeah, we're going to, yeah, they're going to get working on that stuff with some different quotes and so.
Next we have the district calendar updates. As Jen said, October 20th and 21st is MEA break. There is no school. October 24th is staff development, also no school for the kids. November 11th is also a staff development day, so there's no school. November 15th is the date of the regular monthly board meeting. And November 23rd to the 25th is Thanksgiving break. If there is nothing else to be discussed, we would look for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I got a motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM.